The housing development. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, August fourteenth, and I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the city council. If I can have everyone stand and join me with the, to the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Gangona?
Excused.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Excused.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present. May I, uh, first order of business is a legislative update from Senator Scott Wiener's office. Do we have a representative from Scott Wiener's office?
Ms. Mayor, Senator Wiener himself was going to be here.
Oh, so honored. Not here yet, okay, so.
We'll just, we can bring him up when he arrives. I did have confirmation that he would be here.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. Okay, the next item on the agenda is proclaiming July twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, as San Mateo, oh, there he is, Lieutenant Fogarty, uh, San Mateo County Alert Day in Daly City. And I have the, I will, I, I have the honor of introducing Lieutenant William Fogarty, the Office of Emergency Services Director, San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. Good evening, Lieutenant.
Good evening, Mayor. One, thank you very much for having me here today. The San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, Office of Emergency Services has adopted a platform to which we can address any and all communication to people who are either visiting, living, or have businesses in San Mateo County. SMC Alert is the name of that product. What we've done is we've embarked upon a campaign to try and increase enrollment in this, and the way we started it was by actually having a lot of different things, but the first thing was a logo change. Then we started listening to feedback about how to get more people signed up, and one of the difficulties we heard was how to make things easier, so we adopted a new way of doing it, which is texting. So now we're at the third stage of this. We start off with approximately thirty-eight thousand people who had signed up in the county in July of last year. I'm happy to report at this point we're well over sixty thousand people. Our goal here, and you are the very first city to adopt this, so I applaud you for it, is to have each city adopt SMC Alert Day to try and increase the number of subscribers. Daly City right now has one thousand four hundred and sixty-four subscribers to SMC Alert, and obviously we'd like to increase that number. The idea behind SMC Alert is that we can actually allow you to go ahead and get instant messages when in this time, day and age, we obviously are more and more concerned about what is that maybe end up occurring around us. So I think the PowerPoint is just getting ready to start.
It seemed to be some sort of technical difficulty.
Just one minute.
No problem. While they're doing that, I can tell you, one of the other things we started to do is we actually developed a QR code, so for those people who are tech savvy, you can actually scan the QR code, it'll take you directly to our login screen. One of the things I'm really proud about is the fact that we are now able to go ahead and actually offer this service also in different languages. So we have approximately ten different languages that people can receive and sign up alerts for. The system itself, as you will go through and hopefully will see in a little bit, saw obviously a number of increased users during the times we had the storm series in January and February this year. We actually increased the number of people who subscribed to it, as well as send out more and more messages. The idea behind SMC Alert is really to decentralize and allow local jurisdictions the opportunity to send out important messages when incidents are actually occurring. So we work with our public safety partners, we work with our emergency managers, and we work with public works people, so that way they can get out the important information. As an example, road closures, which, there you go, road closures, and after road closures, we also have things like whether or not there's a wildfire, or there's other issues that are in the area. So as you see here, we have sixty thousand six hundred and ninety-four public subscribers, ten thousand subscribed in the new quick signup using the text alerts. We also have another eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-one public safety subscribers. Those people are members of CERT, and people who are able to immediately respond to help out, as well as law enforcement, fire, and again, public works. We sent out five hundred and seven public notifications in the last twelve months. Obviously, that increase had a lot to do with in October twenty sixteen, and then you see the storm series in January and February of twenty seventeen. A lot of that was attributable to important information. As an example, October twentieth in twenty sixteen, there's an RV that caught fire on Highway one oh one. By signing up to this alert, you will get an instant message as the message gets sent out, letting you know to stay away from that area and to avoid it. Obviously, it was a three-hour shutdown. I can't tell you how many times I've been stuck in traffic, and this service will actually help you, so that way you can avoid that. January through February twenty seventeen, as you see a photo there from Pescadero, it was a very wet winter, and so we sent out numerous alerts about roads that were flooded, areas that were closed, and trees and wires that were down. We also are doing some things that we are trying to partner with our local agencies like PG&E, to try and get out important information when there's an actual breakdown of power within the area. We started obviously with SMC Alert Day, the counting is July twenty-fifth, I am here before you in Daly City, and our next city will be Milbury Park, and I'm happy to report that Milbury will be the third one. Our goal is over a hundred thousand subscribers, and while that's indeed daunting, I believe that by getting out the information to the different cities and getting you to support it, will end up helping us as well. What we're doing is we're actually doing a lot more community outreach, we're using social media, we're trying to get on public TV. We also obviously started a hashtag, SMC Alert, and we're putting it out through as many channels as possible, including public television. Finally, the QR code like I described is another way of getting out and getting the outreach that we can. Are there any questions for me?
Thank you, Lieutenant Fogarty. Do we have any questions for Lieutenant Fogarty?
Yeah. Is there a, um, a link that we could share with, in our world?
Absolutely.
That people could automatically sign up for, then?
Absolutely.
Because I'm thinking, like next door, I don't know if you have it all over the county, but that would be a good way to spread the word.
And our, our county communications manager has put that out before, but I can definitely give you the link, which is www.smcalerts.info, and again, that's www.smcalerts, A-L-E-R-T, dot info.
Dot info.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll sign up tonight.
That would be great, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Lieutenant Fogarty, how much does it cost?
It absolutely costs nothing, we will never sell any of your information, it is only used by public safety to go ahead and let you know about any important issues that are happening in your area. We do not sell our subscriber base, you will never get a spam message.
And, um, how much does it cost? To my understanding, you can pick the particular areas within San Mateo to get alerts from. Say, for instance, somebody in Daly City may have a, a relative, say, in Milbury, and let me know what's happening in Milbury as well, is that possible?
That is absolutely possible. If you use the quick signup where you text, then you'll only be able to sign up for one zip code. However, you go directly to the website that I just previously mentioned, you can actually get alerts for anywhere in San Mateo County. And, you know, if you're someone like me who's very nosy about everything that's happening because I have to be prepared, then I actually sign up for all the alerts, it gets a little overwhelming, but it lets you know everything from mountain lion sightings, to roads that are closed, to fires, to obviously road closures.
Thank you, Lieutenant Fogarty, because I, you kind of went down the direction I was trying to lead you, because I just got that text alert about the mountain lion a couple, a couple of days ago. Thank you so much. Any other questions for Lieutenant Fogarty?
Uh, I have no question, but I do have a comment. I think it's great that the county is moving forward with this, it just shows how we're moving towards using innovation and technology to the best to serve our residents, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Lieutenant Fogarty, before you go, I would like to provide you a proclamation. It's not an empty envelope, however, we're missing one signature, so I, I'm not going to give it to you, but I'm going to come up and present it to you, but I want it back. Okay, Lieutenant Fogarty, I just want to read, uh, there's a few whereas's, I'm just only going to read the first one. San Mateo County Alert, whereas San Mateo County Alert will encourage Daly City businesses, residents, and visitors to register for emergency communications to be sent to cellular telephones, electronic mail, and text messages in order to inform the community of events that impact them. Now therefore, I, Glenn R. Sylvester, Mayor, and members of the city council of the city of Daly City, do hereby proclaim July twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, as San Mateo County Alert Day in Daly City. Congratulations, sir. Thank you, Pam, thank you, sir. All right, now I'll get this.
And I'm assuming that staff will put that link up on our website, if it's not already there?
Yes, we certainly will, fabulous.
All right, thank you so much. Has, uh, Senator Wiener arrived yet? Not yet?
Does not look like it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martel. All right, next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July twenty-fourth.
I have an, a proposed amendment to the minutes.
Okay, and I have one as well, Vice Mayor, anything for you?
Uh, no.
Okay, Ms. Christensen?
I want to pass these down to you so that you can actually read along, here's one for the city clerk. It's in the, the second page, uh, page two of the minutes, where we're talking about the memorandum of understanding and salary schedule for police, the POA and police management. And, um, in the second paragraph, it says, "The Director of Finance and Administrative Services Lawrence Chu presented the fiscal impact of the POA and the PMA MOUs, which would result in an increase of five point four million and dollars, and one point nine million dollars respectively to the Daly City's general fund budget." I would like to add to that the following words. "In response to council questions, Director Chu stated that because there are no anticipated increases in city revenue, the funding for this proposed increase in employee compensation would come out of general fund reserves." He went on to say that at the end of this two-year contract, the general fund reserves would be reduced to six point eight million, or the equivalent of thirty days of Daly City operating expenses. The reserve fund of six point eight million would bring our reserve level to eight percent of our budget, well below the city council's approved reserve policy that recommends a level of fifteen percent reserves. And I make this motion in an effort to promote our total council commitment to increase transparency and public understanding. So I move that these additional words be added to the minutes of the July twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen, uh, I will second your approval, uh, your request.
Thank you.
Uh, any further discussion on this amendment? Okay, that being said, uh, I'd like to request to make an amendment to page three of the minutes, which indicates Mayor Sylvester objected to Ms. Alvarez Lynch going over her two-minute public comment limit. I would need additional words to be inserted, as indicated on the videotape for this particular issue, that a minimum of three warnings were given. And due to non-compliance and continuation, Mayor Sylvester called the recess of the meeting at seven forty-six. That's all that I have for the minutes. Okay, is there anything, so with that, with the changes requested in the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to accept the changes with the modification.
So moved.
Okay, you have a first? I'm sorry?
All those in favor?
Okay, well, it has to be second, doesn't it?
I believe she made it and you seconded it.
Okay, all right, so all those in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor, before the council approves the consent agenda, I would like to request to continue item number six. Some new information has just become available to us, which requires us to amend this staff report and recommendation, so we will continue it to a future date to be determined.
Okay, so I motion to approve the consent agenda with the continuation of item number six.
I'll second that, but I have a question for Ms. Martel, would this affect the proposed funding of the project that we were hoping to obtain funds from SP one?
No, it, it will not.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. Okay, we have a first, I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Uh, any further comment? All those in favors, uh, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item is, thank you. That's the end of the consent agenda, okay, next item is draft, item number nine, draft response, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, grand jury report, English is not our language. Our local law enforcement agency is providing multilingual access to outreach programs. And I'll turn that over to, um, Chief, good evening, Chief, and Lieutenant, how are you, sir? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, Lieutenant Cameron Christensen. This evening I'll be presenting a draft response for final direction to the two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report titled, "English is Not Our Only Language: Our Local Law Enforcement Agency is Providing Multilingual Access to Outreach Programs." This report was issued in June of this year, and it pertains to local law enforcement in San Mateo County, and the linguistic challenges presented by the county's non-English speaking population. It reviewed the community outreach programs provided by San Mateo County law enforcement agencies to determine how or if these agencies have modified their outreach efforts. The report listed eleven findings and provided two recommendations of which the city is to respond to. The presiding judge, Honorable Leland Davis III, requested a written response to the report. The finalized written response will be transmitted at the Superior Court, and it will be placed on the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury web, website for reference. If you have any questions at this time, I will begin with the report. The draft response report is dated August fourth, two thousand seventeen, and is directed towards Honorable Leland Davis III, Judge of the Superior Court. It references the aforementioned title that we described, and it begins with, "We are in receipt of the grand jury's final report, English is not our only language. Our local law enforcement agencies provide multilingual access to outreach programs." Pursuant to your June twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen request for response, the Daly City City Council held a public meeting on August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, and approved this response. The city of Daly City responds to the grand jury's findings, conclusions, and recommendations as follows. There are eleven findings, and we'll begin with finding number one. Approximately one hundred and thirty thousand nineteen residents of San Mateo County self-report that they do not speak English very well. The city's response is, "The city neither agrees nor disagrees with this finding. The city of Daly City serves a diverse community who speak a multitude of languages. The city does not know the language capabilities of all San Mateo County residents." Finding number two, "The seventeen law enforcement agencies in San Mateo County provide an impressive one hundred and seventy-plus outreach programs." The city responds, "The city agrees with this finding." Finding three, "The following nine city police departments' websites provide access to multiple languages. The Daly City Police Department is one of the agencies listed in the finding." The city's response is that the city agrees with this finding. Finding four, "The following four city police departments' websites have no mention of outreach programs on their websites. The city of Daly, or I'm sorry, this Daly City Police Department is not one of the agencies listed in the finding. Therefore, the response is, "The city, city neither agrees nor disagrees with this finding. The Daly City Police Department is not one of the agencies listed in the finding." Finding number five, "All seven of the law enforcement agencies listed below consider the language needs of the attendees when planning community outreach events. The Daly City Police Department is one of the agencies listed in the finding. Response, the city agrees with this finding." Finding number seven, "Of the seven law enforcement agencies listed, six provide publication information more than English. The Daly City Police Department is one of the agencies listed in the finding, and the city's response is, "The city agrees with this finding." Finding eight, "Of the seven law enforcement agencies listed, five sponsor specific events for non-English speaking residents. The Daly City Police Department is not one of the agencies listed in the finding. The city's response is, "The city agrees with this finding. The Daly City Police Department will work with community partners to develop specific outreach programs for non-English speaking communities." Finding number nine, "Of the seven law enforcement agencies listed, six work with other police agencies to reach non-English speaking residents for outreach events. The Daly City Police Department is not one of the agencies listed in the finding. The response is that the city agrees with this finding. The Daly City Police Department will seek opportunities to work with other police agencies to reach non-English speaking residents for outreach events." Finding number ten, "Of the seven law enforcement agencies listed, six provide outreach materials and languages other than English. Daly City Police Department is one of the agencies listed in the finding. City's response is that the city agrees with this finding." The final finding, finding eleven, "Of the seven law enforcement agencies listed, six provide onsite interpreters for outreach programs. The Daly City Police Department is not one of the agencies listed in the finding. City's response is that the city agrees with this finding. The Daly City Police Department is one of the most diverse police departments in the Bay Area. The Police Department ensures that bilingual officers attend all planned events to answer questions and communicate with members of the public who are non-English speaking." There were two recommendations listed. Recommendation number one, "All law enforcement agencies in San Mateo County shall modify their websites by including multilingual translation capability to potentially increase access and participation in outreach programs by non-English speaking residents by December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen." The response was that the recommendation has already been implemented. On July eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, the city of Daly City added the recommended languages to the city's website translation feature. Recommendation two, "The law enforcement agencies whose websites lack information about their outreach programs shall update their website with the outreach programs available on the homepage, or provide a prominent link to the outreach programs page by December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen." The city's response was that this recommendation does not pertain to the city of Daly City or the Daly City Police Department. In closing, it states that the city of Daly City appreciates the opportunity to provide written responses to the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report, "English is not our only language. Our local law enforcement agencies provide multilingual access to outreach programs. You can further contact for additional information by contacting the undersigned city manager, Patricia Martel."
Thank you, Lieutenant Christensen, I, uh, any questions? I have one on the recommendation number two, it's, it, um, "The law enforcement agencies whose website lack information about their outreach programs, the response is, the recommendation, the recommendation does not pertain to the city of Daly City or the Daly City Police Department." So I, I gather we do provide the, okay.
Correct, we do, we do.
It was going kind of different ways, and, okay, thank you so much. Okay, any questions for Lieutenant Christensen or Chief Martinez?
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Uh, I would like to say, Lieutenant Christensen and Chief Martinez and staff, thank you so much, and the city attorney for drafting this response to the, uh, judge, and, um, thank you for everything that you do, and thank, I can't say thank you enough, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
All right, so did that require approval?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so I.
It does require approval.
Make a motion to accept the report and authorize the city manager to prepare the written response.
And second?
First and second, any further? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you so much. Next item is, item number ten, the consideration of the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust membership. Ms. O'Bell, uh, Ms. Martel, do, okay.
Ms. Mayor, members of the council. This, uh, report is a follow-up, uh, to the study session that we held earlier this evening, wherein we updated the council on the status of the city's membership in the San Mateo County Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, which is commonly referred to as HART, um, which is an organization of cities throughout, uh, San Mateo County and the, and the county itself, um, that, uh, worked collaboratively on affordable housing projects. I'm going to have Betsy just highlight for the benefit of the public here, and those who are watching at home who were not participants at the study session, and just highlight what HART is, um, and, uh, what we are considering tonight in terms of re-establishing, um, membership in HART.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Earlier this evening, the council conducted a study session regarding the HART, I will reiterate a few key, key points that were presented at that time. The HART was formed in two thousand three, it is a joint powers authority comprised of cities, the county, business, educators, and labor. Daly City was a member for nine years, from two thousand four till two thousand thirteen. The city left the HART due to financial constraints and low utilization of the HART programs. The two main HART programs offered are a developer loan program, where developers can borrow from the HART for short to moderate terms in order to finance, finance affordable housing development. The other primary, uh, activity of the HART is a down payment assistance program, where households with incomes at or below a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year can borrow up to a hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars for the purpose, purpose of a home purchase. During the nine years Daly City was a member of the HART, there were no opening doors, first time home, uh, homebuyer loans closed in Daly City. The cost for the city to join the HART now would be thirty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars, and would represent a general fund impact. The membership fee would be based on Daly City's population, and staff recommends a discussion with HART about the possibility of restructuring their membership fee calculations, calculation method, to consider not only population, but also the revenue situation of the member cities. Staff also recommends that if the city joins the HART, it does so with specific performance goals, and that membership is reconsidered on an annual basis, based on a review of costs and benefits. And with that, I'm available to answer questions on the part of the city council, and we do have representatives from the HART here as well tonight.
Thank you, Ms. O'Bell, do we have any questions from, um, the council? Okay, I'll, uh, oh, Vice Mayor, did you have, go ahead.
No, I'll go after you, sir.
All right, I had asked earlier in the study session if Daly, uh, I learned that Daly City does not have an affordable home, affordable home, first-time home.
First-time homeowner's program.
Program.
Loan program.
At this particular time.
Uh, we do not, uh, Ms. Mayor.
All right, and, um, I had inquired about the HTC Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I was told that it's kind of geared towards nonprofits, is that correct?
For, um, developer loans, developing multifamily housing, yes, yes.
All right, well, my concern is, I picked up the ordinance, number thirteen seventy-seven, and after going through that, I don't see anything that shows any preference towards profit or nonprofits.
Yeah, it's, um, it's stated in the Housing Trust Fund spending plan.
Ms. Mayor, you were referring to the, um, inclusionary housing ordinance. The Housing Trust is a separate document, and it has guidelines that are separate from the inclusionary housing ordinance.
Okay, uh, along those lines, I've heard discussion also about the purpose of the inclusionary housing, um, program is to provide households of varying incomes, to include the very low, to, uh, a broad range. So that includes, uh, basically the very low, the low, the moderate income households. Do we do that?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
In fact, in, um, the most recent affordable housing, or, or market rate housing, uh, program, projects, where we had affordable units, which are the KB Homes, the Wellington Project, uh, and the Garden Valley. where we had affordable units, which are the KB Homes, the Wellington Project, uh, and the Garden Valley Project, there are affordable units included in those market rate developments. And those affordable units have been made available on a competitive basis to people at the moderate level of income.
We go to 120% of the area median.
Which would be for a family of four?
I don't have the exact, I, it's a little over 100,000 a year.
Yeah.
So if a first-time, well, I, I guess a first-time homebuyer wouldn't qualify for those BMRs. Oh, I guess they could if-
Yes, they could, yes.
If, uh, they can afford to pay for it and do not exceed the 781 the Fannie Mae conforming loan limit. Could they apply for the HART program to get one of these BMRs?
Well, they currently are being made available to them in, in the absence of our being a member of HART through the program that, that's being offered, uh, with our inclusionary housing ordinance.
And when we have those BMR units available, there's usually a large number of people that sign up.
Very competitive, yes.
And then there's a lottery with those who, uh, meet the basic requirements.
The, the prices of the most recent batch of BMR homes sold in Daly City were less than $500,000, the prices for those.
Okay, I also picked up some information on the Home Investment Partnership, the Home Program, which it says it's available for nonprofits and for-profit government, uh, governmental agencies that they can receive these funds. And I see that Daly City is also a part and I'm just wondering if CDBG, uh, has that, has funds been allocated for, for those folks as well, uh, through Daly City?
Um, the home, we get an allocation of home funds each year. It's, it's been cut quite a bit right now. Uh, I think for the, the current fiscal year, we get right around $280,000, um, which isn't, uh, we've, in prior years, what we've done is collect the money for a few years and invested in a larger development. Most recently, the 52 units at 6,800 Mission developed by Mid Penn Housing. So that's how we've used our home funds, uh, in the past is for the development of rental housing. The block grant money, um, has more restrictions on it when it comes to developing housing. Um, most of our block grant money has gone into housing rehab. We have not, uh, used, I, I don't believe block grant can be used for down payment assistance and we haven't used it for that purpose.
Thank you. Uh, I, I see some, uh, cases where it can be used, but I don't see a prohibition.
CDBG?
Right.
Um, we can look into that.
Okay, great.
We, we have not in, in the years I've worked on the program, we've never used block grant for down payment assistance. We can look into it.
Especially because the amount of CDBG funding is so low. We're barely able to cover the areas that, uh, we have, uh, funded historically that provide the broadest benefit, including supporting, uh, nonprofits in the community. And we expect that as we go forward, that under the new administration in Washington, that CDBG will cut, be cut even further.
Thank you. Now, uh, getting back to HART on the, uh, terms of the loans. So if a developer came to Daly City and wanted to build, uh, they would, uh, Daly City would prefer them to take on a 55-year renewal term?
That kind of term would be available if it were, um, if it were a, a project that met the guidelines established and if it were the council's pleasure to offer that kind of term, that we could, we could offer that with our Housing Trust Fund dollars.
So utilizing out Housing Trust Fund dollars, would that, for a nonprofit, would they have to pay that money back?
Usually the loans are structured as silent loans that are forgiven over a 55-year period with some repayment based on the income distribution from the project. And that varies from project to project. We get, I would say we get payments from about half of the projects that we've made loans to and other ones, um, because of their own financial constraints, do not make a payment to the city.
Okay, so, uh, let's take for instance, that's a nonprofit. So if we have a for-profit, could, what, could they obtain a loan through the Housing Trust Fund and pay it back within a shorter timeframe rather than holding them to the 55-year, uh, term?
Uh, if it, if the city, if the, um, Daly City Housing Development Finance Agency Board wanted to structure that kind of loan, they could.
All right.
And one thing that, um, when we make investments in, uh, affordable housing on the long-term loan like that, it maintains the affordability for that full period of time. Uh, if we have, uh, the, the HART down payment assistance does not maintain affordability in that house. I mean, the first family gets it. When they own the house, they can sell it for whatever profit they want.
It is, the BMR units developed through our housing ordinance do have, they have a multi-year deed restriction and it stays affordable, I, I believe, for 45 years.
So that, so our system, um, actually maintains the affordability for the 45 years whereas through the HART system, it does not maintain the affordability. It's just for the family that buys, that gets the, uh, assistance, right? And once they own the house, it's theirs, there's no restrictions.
Continuing on my question, so, uh, if a developer, um, now I'm talking about the development aspect. If a developer, can a developer come to HART and request funds for a piece of property in Daly City that they want to build?
At, at this time, I don't believe they'd be eligible for a HART loan in Daly City.
At this time, okay. Mr. Sanchez?
Currently, uh, a developer, Armando Sanchez, I'm the executive director of HART, just to introduce myself. Uh, currently, they would, a for-profit developer or a nonprofit developer would not be avail, uh, available to, uh, obtain our funds. But, um, should you become a member, a for-profit developer certainly could apply for funds. We have funded several in the past.
Thank you. Um, that's all the questions that I have at this time for, uh, the HART, uh, this item on the agenda. Vice Mayor, did you have something? No?
The, the staff recommended saying that there had to be some sort of, um, if we were to move forward, what would be, um, the performance measures that you, um, indicated? And I'd like to see how, um, kind of, uh, the thought process around exactly what those performance measures would entail.
So, um, what we were suggesting is that with, as is the case with many organizations that we fund, um, we like to get an annual report as to how the city is benefiting from the funds that are being expended, uh, for that organization. So in terms of the various programs that have been outlined for you tonight, we'd like to know annually from HART exactly how Daly City is benefiting in each one of those programmatic areas. How many loans are being provided, how many developers they're working with, um, in order for the council to see, um, the value that, that we're getting from the dollars that are being expended. So we definitely, if the council's desire is to, um, utilize, uh, the city's revert, reserve funds to fund HART, uh, then we would put together, uh, some performance measures that we would like answered each year as part of the budget process to review, um, the value that we're getting from HART, which is the basis on which the council decided to defund HART in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I have a comment too, is that, um, it's confusing to me about, um, the source of the, of the money for this. I mean, it's not, it's not going to be, uh, it's gonna be out of our reserves again.
Well, we don't have a budgetary allocation for it.
Yeah, there's no allocation for it.
Right, so you'd have to, to allocate it from reserve funds in order to fund this.
And so one thing that, that I would like to propose is that we reconsider membership, uh, in HART when our finances would allow us to pay for membership out of our regular budget, not reserves. So that, um, we always keep our option open to that. But also, um, there needs to be some, um, on the membership fees, it shouldn't just be based on population or even financial need. But what about, uh, giving an incentive to the cities who have stepped up and provided affordable housing? Which Daly City is one of the three in the county that has made a significant contribution to affordable housing. So, mm, I'd like to see HART restructure its, its membership, uh, fees on a completely different formula. Population says we pay the most, but we already are providing the most affordable housing. So, uh, we need to get some sort of carrot for that.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. I have a question for, um, Mr. Sanchez. What would be the possibility of keeping the city updated as to, like, say, either on a semi-annual or yearly basis as to the benefit of the program for specifically Daly City? Would that be difficult to obtain?
No, it certainly would not be difficult. I, I think honestly, HART has done a very poor job communicating to its city members what they've done in each jurisdiction. Uh, I, I think this is something that we should be doing for all cities to keep them informed so that they are, they see the value that's coming to them. So I, I, I would have no objections to providing such a report to the city.
Um, the other question that arose is that, how can I put this in a way that really doesn't bring down Daly City? And that's the per capita, uh, as opposed to other cities. And of course, with the highest population, I mean, I, I don't think you can make the decision, but would your board, maybe it can be brought to the board to come up with some sort of additional calculation for us? I, I mean, something to consider.
Uh, ye, yes, sir, I, I could certainly s, present to the board the situation and, and let them have a discussion. I was not party when HART was born, um, put together this pricing structure. I think that the time they determined it was almost fair, I, I don't know if it is or if it isn't. But I could certainly tell them that Daly City would like us to at least take a look at, at what, uh, how the structure is done and present it to them and let, see what they decide.
Mr. Mayor, the reason that we added, uh, the information that we did in the report under the discussion was to suggest, which we do for you annually as part of the budget process, um, we compare Daly City's per capita revenue, uh, to other cities. And you all recall the chart that shows Daly City being near the bottom of the list of all 20 cities in the county in terms of per capita revenue. So in other words, we have the largest population, but we do not have the largest revenue base. There are other cities that have smaller populations that have higher revenue per capita than we do. Um, and yet, when funding out, uh, allocations are, are based purely on population, Daly City always ends up paying more because we have the largest population, but not because we have the highest per capita revenue.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. Um, what, we left HART in 2013?
That's correct.
And for our real estate persons, Mr. Lee, Lee, uh, has the purchasing of homes increased since 2013? As opposed between, uh, 2000, looks like 2000 to 2013? Do you see a, a increase in the purchase of homes?
Yes, it definitely increased, especially in the last, uh, year when we increased the limit. So previously, the limit was extremely low and it was really difficult to find a home. You couldn't find a single-family home. Now, we've increased the limit to, the purchase limit to 781 and that allows a single-family home plus a nice lot of condos. So definitely a large increase in sales.
All right, that's all the questions I have. Any other, uh, questions from my colleagues?
When do you think that, um, I'm sorry?
You had said that you might be able to bring this, uh, in front of your board regarding, um, perhaps, uh, recalculation of the, of the fees. When do you think you can arrive at a decision for that?
Um, I, I could present it to them and, you know, our next board meeting in September, I could put it in, in the agenda for them to at least see if they would want to reconsider and direct staff to come up with other alternatives. So at, at the next board meeting in Sep, uh, the five, the fourth Wednesday of Wednesday, uh, the fourth Wednesday of the month of September, I could present to them and say, Daly City asked if you, if there was a possibility for reconsidering the way that the dues are structured. So I could present it to them. Again, I do not know what decision they will make, but-
Sure, yeah, okay.
Um, I heard, Ms. Sanchez, you made mention earlier, and perhaps the city can respond to this, but we received, uh, quite a bit of funds back from the redevelopment agency to which, Ms. Sanchez, you mentioned, and I think that was, uh, over a million dollars. Uh, could those funds be used to, uh, for membership for affordable housing and first-time homebuyer programs?
With those, uh, Mr. Mayor, tho, those funds came back to the city as general funds in most cases. A few cities allocated some money for, like San Mateo for housing, but in general, uh, they, they are considered general funds, so it would be part of your general fund budget.
I've also heard from the, uh, the city that, uh, the council hasn't been, the, the staff hasn't been given directions to create a first-time homeowners, a first-time homebuyers program. And I think, my feeling is that I think that we need to start, uh, if we don't start soon, uh, I would like to take part in something that's already established until the city at that time can develop some, sort of program to which we wouldn't have to duplicate the efforts. That's just my comment.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we certainly can do that. Um, as I mentioned, the, the idea of having our own program was discussed by the council at the time that they defunded HART. Uh, but there was no specific direction. It was discussed and, and, uh, but it, there was no specific direction given to staff to go implement or i, identify a program and bring it back for approval. If that's the desire of the council, we certainly can sit down, uh, with staff and structure a potential program and come back to you and review it with you.
I, I am assuming that if this council were to support something like that, that none of us or our immediate families would be eligible due to conflict of interest for those loans, correct?
Yes, that would be correct, yeah.
Well, there is a part in the, um, in the ordinance, I did read that. City, uh, city officials and, and officials and their immediate family and family members who have policymaking authority or influence regarding the city housing programs do not qualify as having a remote interest as provided by California Government Code, Section 1091.
Correct.
All right, is there any, um, further questions? I have no cards from the public on item number 10. Oh, oh, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
I don't have, I don't have a question, but I really, I do have a, a comment. And this was reiterated earlier this evening around, um, just ensuring, um, you know, if, when, or if we do decide in moving forward with HART, um, that the outreach mechanism is so important. Given the fact that it, we, we're stating, well, we're the largest population in San Mateo where our fees are the, the, we pay the most if we were to be in part of this program and we were in the past, I really would like to see a very robust outreach program, especially since, um, you know, this, this wasn't, um, there for our residents in the past. And I think for me, that's important. I mean, we talked about, um, having, you know, just a robust program, whether it's through social media, it's through flyering. I mean, I think that's the key here. We, we didn't join previously because there was, um, the outcome, right? But I think this is a different time and the opportunity for our residents could be lost. So for me, the important aspect is also, is just a really robust outreach program so that, um, residents of Daly City know about this, um, in the future. So that's, uh, a caveat for me if we were to move forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, I'm, uh-
If I may, Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
We actually did go back and review as part of gathering the facts, um, and background information for this report. And I don't think that Betsy mentioned it, but we actually did host, the city of Daly City did host some workshops on the first-time, uh, homeowners loan program on behalf of HART when we were a member. So we did actually have workshops here that we hosted and tried to support the program in- in Hart. Unfortunately, at the time, it didn't result in any loans being made here in Daly City. But we did assist them and we would certainly do that in the future if, if that's the wish of the council to move forward with renewing membership.
Ready for a motion?
I'd like to open it up to the public hearing. I got three cards on this.
Oh, great. Let's hear what the public has to say.
So, with the permission of the council, I'd like to open it up to public hearing. Okay, thank you.
It's not a public hearing, though.
I mean, a, a public comment.
Yeah, let's just hear from them.
Oh, boy. All right, we'll start off with Mr. Bill Stupinovich, and after him, we have Mr. Quinn. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. I'm Bill Stupinovich from the Franciscan Park, and the start program relates to the situation at the park in that there, that it gives hope to people that they can have affordable housing. And there's some similarities in what the response from the city and sort of the, well, it didn't pay off and that we have ongoing expenses. And what I got from the comprehensive annual report from June 30th, 2016, the city has ongoing impact economic, recessionary effects from 2008, continued staffing. So, the question is if what, what has happened over the past eight years that the city has run and that the, that the reserve funds have been decreased, that's what we hear at the Franciscan, and we hope that, that this program as well as this council can address the issues of the Franciscan in providing affordable housing. Seems that it's very difficult here in Daly City to address this, and hopefully with this new effort here on the council, can move forward on this and provide housing and hopefully help the Franciscan Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stupinovich. Mr. Quinn?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We feel that the Hart program is very much related to the Franciscan Mobile Home Park in that it is about affordable housing. The Mobile Home Park was purchased under an act of California Senate by Section 34, 376, to help authorize housing authorities to issue bonds and loans proceeds to nonprofit corporations to finance the acquisition of mobile home parks to provide housing for persons of very low income. And it is to lessen the burden of affordable housing on the city. It also states in here that the borrower shall apply amounts on deposit in the rental assistance fund to reduce rents of qualified spaces occupied by very low-income residents, and then the alternative to purchase mobile homes for sale within the project in order to preserve housing for very low-income residents. In addition, use good faith efforts to implement a program and to use funds that are available to purchase mobile homes located in qualified spaces that are for sale within the project in order to permit such spaces to retain their designation as qualified spaces. The borrower with the assistance of the issuer, the city, shall use good faith efforts to apply for grants and low-interest rate loans available to implement such a program. They've never done anything like that. Low-income spaces shall be continuously occupied by very low-income residents. And the 101 low-income sites from 2002 should be the same sites today if there is compliance. Ed Quigley is the source of the ongoing compliance reports. The fraud starts with Ed Quigley, Regional Vice President of United States Residential Group, who incorporates all of this fraudulent information in his reports to RSG and now Wolf Company. So, where are these reports? We need to report from Wolf Company about the records he received from RSG as to the credibility accuracy.
Mr. Quinn, please finish up, please.
So, where does the theory of float come in? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
I know, it's a lot to say.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Kinney-Kinney.
The last presentation of the Hart group is very much related to what had happened, and it's still happening at the Franciscan Park. And we are not against what Hart is proposing. Any financial offer that will help the low-income population should be welcome. We are only concerned with a very important part of this mechanism, and this is about compliance. Who will look over the compliance on this mechanism with what Hart is proposing? I welcome comments from Councilwoman Judith on, we are very much concerned with affordable housing here. And also, Mayor, you're all very concerned with the very low income and the low-income population, which is great. But then what happened to the Franciscan project? You gave 53 million to a developer, there was never, never any compliance up to today. And some of you agree with me on that, and that's my main concern. How do we know that all these guidelines, all these proposals, all these promises to the very low-income first-time buyers will be accomplished? Where is the compliance here? And I'm glad you're going on to further study. We want to participate in this. In the same way, we want the Franciscan study session to continue because the transfer needs to happen to us, to the homeowners. There had been an effort to slow it down, we don't appreciate it, it's against the court order. You will never be able to prove that you are or Link Housing is in compliance, and therefore, as Betsy here said, your developer and the, and Wolf Housing, if they are not able to produce any proof on compliance, needs to be fined and punished.
Okay, Mr. Kinney-Kinney, can you finish up?
And investigations, we start on this before we get into this similar program.
Thank you, Mr. Kinney-Kinney.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for a motion now?
Is there any further cards? No further cards. Permission to close the public comment on this matter, item number 10.
Okay, I'd like to.
Okay.
Well, we, I'd like to make a motion.
Motion? I mean, to close, so we have a first?
But we don't have a public hearing.
You don't need to close, all right.
It's not a public hearing, it's a comment.
All right, so, is there a motion anyone would like to make?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we not rejoin Hart at this time, but that we reconsider our membership when two things happen. One, that there's a new fee structure that makes our membership more affordable and our increased financial ability to pay for it, not out of reserves, but out of our regular general fund budget.
Okay, it's a motion by Councilmember Christensen. Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion dies. Is there any other motion that would like to be made?
Yes, I, I.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to move forward into us getting back into the Hart program. I think it is a good program. I think it's something that Daly City needs in terms of affordable housing. I have read through the staff report. I think the staff recommendations about setting in some performance evaluations and guidelines, I'd also like to, I'm interested, obviously, in Mr. Sanchez's coming back to us and letting us know whether or not our fee structure can be renegotiated and perhaps coming up with a different formula that might be more palatable to the rest of the council. So, I would like to make a motion that we move forward into starting the process of getting back into the Hart program.
Is there a second?
I second that. But with a friendly amendment, if I may. I'd, I'd really like to put that, the emphasis on really ensuring that there's that outreach mechanism and not necessarily just the workshop as mentioned before, but really, I'd like to see an outreach plan and how, you know, this would be done for the residents and workers of the city of Daly City.
I have a, a request for clarification. When you said move forward with the process, was that your exact words?
Yes, I believe so.
So, it's not, we're not joining, rejoining Hart, but we're looking at how to negotiate the, the fee structure and it's going to come back to us later?
So, yes, yes, yes.
Is that what you're proposing? Yeah, just for clarification.
I am asserting that what we need to do is start the process that will, that will give us the information about the fee structure, about the, I think you were talking about the performance evaluation.
Correct.
And then we can make a firm decision on, but I want this thing to move forward. That's my, my goal.
We will gather the information available. We'll take a look at additional information from the Executive Director of Hart, and we'll incorporate what we find and bring it back to the council.
Which is pretty much what I said in my motion, just worded differently.
And we will include a funding mechanism for it.
Excuse me. Let me make a point of clarification here. We have a motion, we have a requested amendment to the motion, and that was not accepted.
Oh.
We have to first accept the amendment before we can move on.
Okay.
So, on the motion by Councilmember Buena Ventura to include the amendment by Vice Mayor Manalo, we'll take a vote.
You can just read your motion.
I, I accept the friendly amendment, yes.
You accept the friendly amendment. Thank you so much. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, so there's a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Since this motion is basically what I, my motion was, I'll vote yes, just reworded.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
All right, thank you. Moving on to the, so, we have a, staff will kindly look into this and provide this additional information as soon as possible. Thank you so much. All right, item number 11, the award of construction contract for the Hunapurcera Boulevard, Geneva Avenue and San Pedro Road pavement and rehabilitation project. Mr. Fuller and Mr. Rogers? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The Hunapurcera Boulevard, Geneva Avenue and San Pedro Road pavement rehabilitation project includes base repair, asphalt overlay, reconstruction of approximately a third of a mile of city streets. The streets were selected by the city's pavement management program as well as recommendations from the street maintenance division. Curbs, concrete curb ramps at street intersections will be constructed in compliance with the Americans with Disability Act. The project was advertised on June 22nd, 2017, and two bids were received on July 13th, 2017, at bid opening. The two bids were from G Bordolato and Company and O'Grady Paving. The low bidder was based on the lowest of a combined total of a base bid and a bid alternative one. G Bordolato and Company was the low bidder out, based out of San Carlos, and they've been in business since 1979. They hold a current, and they are in good standings with a required contractor's license of Class A. Bordolato's references included the city of San Carlos, Newark, and San Jose, and they have previously done work in Daly City in 2015 and 16 in a parking lot pavement rehabilitation project. The estimated construction cost for this project is $1,895,446, which includes 10% contingency and 10% construction inspection and contract administration fee. Staff recommends that the city council accept all bids, pre-appropriate funds, and award a construction contract to G Bordolato and Company Incorporated of San Carlos, California in the amount of $1,579,539.39 for the subject project and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Staff further recommends that the city, city council affirm the SEQA determination of categorical exemption and approve the design documents for Hunapurcera Boulevard, Geneva Avenue, and San Pedro Road pavement rehabilitation project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions from council?
I just have a quickie. I'm assuming that they, when you say they successfully completed a project here in Daly City, that it was high-quality, the one that they did.
Yes, they've done acceptable, acceptable work for the city in the past.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
No.
I have one. Could any of this funding, funding be obtained through SB1?
Actually, the, in the future, it would be, but SB1 monies won't become available till September, I mean, till after January 1, and they're alloc, they'll be allocated to us in the beginning of the program as, as first starts to wind, wind up at only about $100,000 a month. So, we won't really have money sufficient for a project till probably the middle of next summer. And there'll be an item that we'll bring forward to you at the next council meeting. We took that item off consent.
Okay.
To designate the project, the first project that'll get SB1 money, and from then on, you'll see that money programmed through our capital improvement program on a regular basis.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. You made mention close to 100,000 a month. I think I had done some research, and Daly City is, hopefully during the program, will be obtaining close to $5 million?
It, we get about $2.5 million worth of gas tax now, and when the SB1 taxes are all in play and the program is fully up and running, it'll pretty much double the amount of money we get to the $5 million figure.
Thank you. That was just information for the public. As the public, you folks are paying for the additional sales tax, and Daly City with the population and the size of its population, our city will be getting some additional funds to which will be used, hopefully and primarily for street repair and fixing up our streets.
That's all it can be for. SB1 is actually a little more restricted than conventional gas tax in that they really wanted to go toward pavement projects like this one, but this one's just getting, we're going to get going on this one sooner with money we already have.
And I have to commend you, I saw in your estimate, and as opposed, the higher estimate was 2 million, this is 5.1.5, and you folks had recommend, estimated 1.4, so you're very close. And do we have the mon, do we have the funds to pay for it?
For this particular project, we do. Just as point of history for the, we have done a very good job in our pavement management program, I think you've said, heard me say that before. But if we kept spending at the rate we were currently spending, our CAP actually projected that we would run out of gas tax money, not just gas tax, but misery and all the transportation related monies, in about eight years, we would go into the negatives. So, getting the SB1 money will keep us, that from happening and allow us to keep our program just continuing to roll along so that the city has few, if any, potholes and, and the street's in really good shape.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Any further questions from council?
Just a comment. It will not fix the potholes on Mission Street because that's not a Daly City street, it's a state highway. And I know you're all suffering from the same misalignment of your cars because of those potholes, but...
Actually, if we're lucky, it might, because the state gets some of the SB1 money, too.
Yes. Will they please fix some of those potholes?
Or 30, Highway 35, either one of them.
Yeah, that's another one that's full of potholes.
Well, well, since we're on that topic, I, it's incumbent upon the council and all the citizens and those watching at home, feel free to get ahold of our Public Works Division, ascertain if that is a Daly City street. If you noticed the on-ramp to the freeway at Planet Fitness, you had a big pothole there.
Yeah.
And I reported it to the state, and it was fixed. So, regarding Mission Street or Highway 35, which happens to belong to the state, I think it's Department of Transportation, you can make the report, so please don't hesitate to do so and stay in. So, please don't hesitate to do so and stay involved. Thank you so much. All right, I have no cards on this matter, item number 11 at this time, so I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution.
So, move.
First?
Second.
And the second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you so much. Now's the time, ladies and gentlemen, for public comments. I see we have a, quite a large crowd here this evening. I want to offer everyone the opportunity to speak, and in doing so, I would ask that you adhere to the two-minute rule. That way, we can get out of here on time and everybody gets a chance to speak. And we can be courteous, courteous to one another. So, I see a large, I'm going to start off with the largest contingent, and that has to deal with the paving aspect in the area of Westlake. So, what I would like to do is begin calling speakers up to speak, and we'll go from there. Oh, paving, okay. We'll start off with Karen Boyle, and after Ms. Boyle, we'll have a Julie O'Callahan. Ms. Boyle, are you here this evening?
I'm going to give my two minutes to Julie O'Callahan too, is that all right?
You want to give your two minutes to?
To Julie O'Callahan.
So, Julie's going to...
About the same, we're on the same page.
Oh, okay, so basically, you may have something?
She's going to talk.
Oh, she's going to talk, okay.
She's going to get the whole four minutes.
Four minutes?
Yes.
Okay, you each get two, all right. Thank you so much.
I have an announcement. Good evening, Mayor Sylvester. Is it possible to hand these out?
Sure.
Yeah, just hand them to me and I'll pass them down.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Hold on for a second. Let us get the information and we'll restart the clock, make sure you get your full two minutes.
I have four minutes.
I mean, four minutes, I'm sorry. Okay, are we ready? Okay, we have the information. Please begin.
Okay, thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my concerns. I provided you with a listing for an advertising that was, for Rooms for Rent, that was posted on Craigslist. This link to Craigslist was shared with the city manager on August 10. As you can see in here, the ad leads with four bedrooms, month-to-month shared rooms, and the location of this rooming house is on Merriam Street. However, if you, however, if you read the description in the advertisement, this house was newly remodeled in 2016, and it has nine bedrooms, five bathrooms, three working rooms, and three kitchens. Each room is shared with three twin beds to a room, giving a total occupancy of 27 people. In my opinion, this is a flagrant abuse of the intent of the ADU and JADU legislation which was passed by the state and became effective in January 2017. I'm, I want, however, Daly City requires ADU and JADUs to be owner-occupied. How does the city enforce this requirement? If you look at the ad, it states that to contact www.hackandsleep.com for additional information. This does not just seem to be owner-occupied, but seems to be more of a business. And the second handout I gave you is from the website of www.hackandsleep.com. I was wondering, is under these legislations, when was, when a permit is obtained to do this type of remodeling, does the city require the owner to get approval from their neighbors for such an extensive remodeling job to what looks like on the pictures from the website as a single-dwelling home? Significant modifications were made to this home. And does this model, remodel fall within zoning ordinance for Daly City?
Yes.
This rooming house has 27 occupants when it was fully rented out. To me, this seems like a potential fire safety issue as I'm not sure what the maximum number of people who can safely live in a single-family home per the fire code. But it does seem like there's an awful lot of people in this house which could be a safety issue. I was also concerned as to whether or not an environmental impact analysis was done by the city with respect to the increased demand on the city's water supply, electricity or sewer system. A rooming house of this magnitude would surely have some impact on these infrastructure. I'm not sure if the city has required the business or homeowner to reinforce the sewer system or the city reinforce the sewer system to accommodate this number of residents. Lastly, this advertisement cites that there's plenty of parking in this neighborhood. For those of you who don't know, Merriam Street is located off of John Daly Boulevard near Bark Street, east of 280. When I attended the last city council meeting, it was my recollection that there was a concern from people that that part of Daly City didn't have a lot of parking, and that's why there's some people inclined to be in favor of the paving. I don't think this company, which solicitors these tenants, seems to think otherwise in the fact that they're advertising plenty of parking. Personally, I don't think any neighborhood has a room to park an additional 25 extra cars if everyone that lived there had a car. And lastly, with 27 people paying $900 a month, the business owner is collecting $24,300 a month or $291,000 a year. Does the business owner have the required licenses Daly City requires and pay the appropriate taxes for these types of business owner-owned ADUs? I would think that if the city is collecting these taxes, then this would generate some additional revenue for the city. I agree with my neighbors who are here to voice their concerns of the rooming houses, the abuse of the rooming houses, and the paving, paving issue as well as the parking issue that has resulted because of these increased rooming houses. And I think consideration should be given as to how the city will handle these abusers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a Julie Nordman, and after Julie, we have a David Jeffreyos. Jeffrey, Jeffrey, Jeffries, okay. Ms. Norman, oh.
I was in the front row, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Julie Nordman. I live on Skyline Drive in Daly City, and I am an owner, and I occupy my house. I came down to Daly City to get a, apply for a disabled plaque for my husband, myself, and my mother, which is 84. I was denied.
You don't get them there.
There is no extreme circumstances listed on your website, and my husband's on the liver transplant list. Also, I have a house, two houses on each side that are not owner-occupied, that have multiple families in there with multiple cars, car club, and I came down here, they denied me saying that, oh, why don't you pave after I've done a beautiful landscaping to make everything nice in the neighborhood? And they told me, the city told me to take a permit out and pave my front lawn for my parking. And the house next door has rented rooms, the owner doesn't live there, there is eight by 10, so rented for $1,500 a month, and I want to stop to it. I don't think paving is the thing to go on. And for anybody that tried to get a disabled plaque, they're not giving them out for what reasons, I don't know. And I'm very upset about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm confused. What disabled plaque is she talking about?
Uh, hold on. Come on, step up.
I just had a question.
I had the question.
What disabled plaque? You get that from the state of California to put on your car?
It's a blue zone.
Oh, you want a blue zone?
Yes.
A parking zone?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
And I applied for that in June, and...
Do you have a driveway and a garage?
I have a driveway and a garage, and that, the city does have this on record. None of the vehicles, as you can see, I don't have a zipper car or a small car. All my vehicles do not fit in the garage, and the city does ask for, do you have a garage door unit in their, in their house?
No, I asked the, the simple question, you answered it for me, and I thank you very much.
None of the, none of the vehicles fit in my garage.
Thank you. All right. Did I give you the card, Madam Clerk? Was it David?
David, yes.
Yeah, okay, I will have your card. Yeah, I think I gave, okay, welcome, sir.
My name's David Jeffries. I reside on Garden Grove Drive in the Westlake neighborhood. I am against allowing property owners to pave over their front lawns to create parking spaces, which is in direct violation of city ordinance 10.32.165. The parking situation is directly tied to single-family homes that have been turned illegally into room, rooming houses with multiple and unrelated tenants which, whom own vehicles themselves. Because of overcrowding of vehicles, these tenants park on their front lawns of their rented homes in order to avoid parking far from the house. This has negatively affected the appeal of our wonderful neighborhood. The state mandates the city increase the available housing in the city by using ADUs and JADUs, which are built code. However, these illegal rooming homes circumvent city code, and Daly City does not get credit for these illegal rooming houses with the state. These rooming homes also take money from the city's coffers because these absentee landlords typically do not register as businesses, and they do not pay taxes. Also, the residents of these rooming homes increase use, they increase the use of city services. To help solve the solution, to help solve this problem, I'm asking the city support for cracking down on these absentee landlords. Our city needs strong, visible code enforcement. I must remind the city that code enforcement pays for itself. The fines the city levies against these absentee landlords can pay for the enforcement. Lastly, I would like to make a suggestion that the city make digital maps showing homes that are legally single, single-family resident, or rentals, and homes with ADUs and JADUs, and make the map available to the public. This way, citizens can notify the city when there's illegal rental. So, in conclusion, let's kill two birds with one stone. I do not want to see Westlake turned into a giant concrete parking lot. I want to see illegal rooming homes turned back into single-family homes. Code enforcement is the stone that solves this issue. The city must be firm and enforce the parking laws and building codes that are already on the books.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Okay, we have a Scott McNutt, and after him will be Eileen Everett. Good evening, sir.
Hi. First off, I agree with everyone, what everyone just said, I agree with them wholeheartedly. My house that I live in, my mom grew up in it, my grandfather was, he bought it in 55. It was the model home for Westlake. I don't want it to change, I want it to stay the way it is. I want it to be the little boxes on the hillside, like the song was written about, you know? Yeah, I don't want a parking lot. The, the neighbor down the street from me, she's got five or six people living in it, cars everywhere. It's just got to stop, you know? So, yeah, I agree with them. Please handle it. It's ridiculous. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Eileen Everett, and after Ms. Everett, we have Charles Malls, Mallsberry. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Eileen Everett. I reside on Westmont Drive in the Westlake. I tune against allowing property owners to pave over their front lawns to create parking space. I agree with Mr. Jeffries that the parking situation is directly tied to single-family homes that have been illegally converted into rooming houses with multiple unrelated tenants. As a resident of 18 years, seemingly overnight, my neighborhood has been negatively transformed by this phenomenon. At a recent meeting of concerned citizens, instances of absentee landlords and egregious code violations, including so-called crash pads, hostels, and frat houses being raided by Daly City police, were shared. Not long ago, a four-bedroom house right next door to mine was sold to a real estate investor. The selling realtor, acting as property manager, began subletting each room to individual renters, and construction began on an additional unit in the garage. During the construction, my husband and I noticed a significant gas leak in the pipe leading into the garage, less than three feet from our front porch. We alerted the tenants, physically showing them the leak and asking them to call PG&E and their landlord immediately. None of them appeared to understand in English or acknowledge the severity of the situation. Nothing was done about the leak, and we had to call PG&E ourselves to get it fixed. We also alerted city inspectors to the construction, which triggered the leak, and it took them several visits before the landlord appeared and legal permits were attained. While the people living next door are quiet and kind, they are not good neighbors if they are unwilling or unable to report gas leaks. For me, this is an issue that goes beyond overcrowded parking, noise nuisances, or unsightly landscaping. This is a safety issue. What opinion do fire and safety officials have regarding the matter? Do first responders worry about their ability to effectively evacuate or tend to emergencies with multiple tenants occupying a labyrinth of rooms that may or may not be up to code? How would cars parked across paved lawns impede emergency personnel and vehicles? I cannot help but think of the tragedies in San Bruno and Oakland. What can I do to support the city's code enforcement efforts and its crackdown on illegal rooming houses so that I may protect my financial investment, but more importantly, my family?
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Okay, Mr. Charles Mallsberry, and then we have a Jaclyn Newman. Good evening, sir.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So, my name is Charles Mallsberry, and I'm a resident and homeowner also in the same neighborhood on Manor Court. And just recently, the same situation that people are talking about happened where a longtime owner sold, some people bought the house next door and immediately began renovations. And we could see the listings on Craigslist, the same kind of thing where there's many, many people coming and going, renting by the room. So, I just wanted to come out tonight and voice my concern about this and, and support everyone that's against that, and especially the paving. I don't agree with that either. I don't think it's a good idea. There's so many cars over there already with, there's at least four tenants, and they all have cars. So, we're seeing that everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, thank you very much. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mallsberry. Okay, we, we have a Ms. Jaclyn Newman, and then Carmen Moising?
Moisey.
Moisey? Okay.
I'm the big mouse, I'll speak for both.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't think it'll be four minutes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jaclyn Newman, and I'm against the paving of front yards as a solution to parking problems in my Olympic section neighborhood. My husband and I bought our home 17 years ago in this peaceful and quiet, single-family neighborhood with well-kept homes and yards and a friendly neighborhood feel. But in the past several years, we've seen the character of our neighborhood change. Absentee owners are turning single-family houses into multi-unit dwellings in order to maximize their income stream. Some homes are converted into apartment units with separate exterior entrances, with work done off-approved plans, or with alterations after final inspection, or in some cases, without any permits or inspections. An example that we've spoken much about in our resident meetings is 70 West Park, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. In a smaller scale than 70 West Park, in which a house was turned into four apartment units, on my street, there is a house right now undergoing construction where the living room and dining room are being turned into separate rental units with exterior locked doors and numbers on the doors. Some single-family homes are being turned into student or techie dorms with as many as 30 beds rented by the night, including the one that Ms. O'Callahan spoke of, which is Hack and Sleep. Another one was Crash Pad. I don't know if that's still in operation, that's the one that was raided. On a smaller scale, rent by the rooms and rent by the bed are happening all over the city, including my neighborhood of Olympic Section. Another example is Airbnb listings in Daly City. Today, there are numerous listings with couches or rooms advertised for $56 to $200 per night in the Olympic Section, Westlake One, Westlake Highlands, and other areas. A couch in someone's living room for $56 a night. None of these operators are charging or paying occupancy taxes because Airbnb hosts are not required to register in Daly City. Also, on Craigslist alone today, there are over 80 rooms for rent by the month in Daly City for as much as $1,800 per room, with many houses showing more than one room per rent, for rent. Is that my four minutes?
That's your two minutes.
That's my two minutes, thank you. These illegal rooming house and apartment conversions are packing people and cars like sardines, creating parking nightmares and myriad other problems, including trash left in the street and in yards, unkept yards, noise, more people bring more dogs, not just more cars. The answer to parking shortages is not to pay front yards and turn them into parking lots. The solution is to develop, to develop ADUs in accordance with building, safety, and occupancy codes. No more than one ADU or JADU per house with owner-occupancy required and enforced. The city needs to proactively seek out and enforce against illegal rooming house, apartment, and hostel conversions to the extent of the law, including holding contractors who build them and the realtors who manage them responsible, as well as the owners. Shut these operations down and fine them for building code violation as well as... Shut these operations down and fine them for building code violations as well as unpaid rent taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Gabriella.
Did I call somebody up prior to that? Was there someone?
Swan?
Okay. Oh, that's right. It was two cards the last time. Mr. Swan, how are you? Oh, you got nothing?
Good, thank you.
Yeah?
I have him speak on my behalf. Mr. Leong is gonna have me speak on his...
This is on this issue as well.
Okay. All right. For the record, we have Mr. Swan, and you're gonna speak on behalf of Mr. John...
Leong.
Leong?
Right.
Leong, okay.
So I gotta sit down.
No, no, I want him to stand next to you so that the public sees that. It's not gonna be easy here, are you? Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. As you can see, there's an awful lot of concern about the paving issue, but that's not what we're really concerned about. What we're really concerned about is the abuse of our neighborhoods and the degradation of our community. And we also recognize, and Judith Christensen brought this up last week, that some neighborhoods have different requirements for parking and different, you know, levels of agreement. But on the west side of 280, I can tell you, if you don't wanna hear from me, you can hear from quite a few other people, we don't want paving. What we want is control over the absentee landlords that are buying these houses and turn them into rooming houses, apartment buildings, and what have you, Airbnbs, Craigslist. We went on the internet a week ago, and we found 84 rooms for rent on Tuesday night of last week on Craigslist. That changes from day to day. Airbnb had about 40. There's a whole bunch of these. There's Roommates.com. There's a whole bunch of these operations. It's an incredible problem that you may not be seeing, but if you go on the internet and Google for rooms for rent in Daly City, make sure you're sitting down, okay? Where we're coming from is, we think that the rules that the state came up with for ADUs and JADUs actually has a silver lining around it. We know that the city is mandated to increase its housing stock every 10 years, and the city is supposed to encourage the building of ADUs and JADUs. That's what the memorandum says from the State Department of Housing. It says encourage, okay? Well, there's a silver lining because it also requires owner occupancy. And what we find is when the owner's living in the house and he's got a tenant, that's a way better situation than when the owner's living in Burlingame and renting his place out to 16 or 20 people, all with cars, no commitment to our community. So what we want is for the city to get down off the dais and sit down with us, the community, and talk about this problem. We realize there's a lot of roadblocks you have. For instance, the definition of single-family is a big problem. The Santa Barbara case is a big issue. The Lompoc case is a big issue. But I'll tell you what's real clean-cut, is when you have an owner that's going on Craigslist advertising for rooms, that's not a family, and that is something that we can control. What we want is no more paving permits to be issued, period. And we also want no more building permits to be issued until we've worked this out with the community. We understand that there's roadblocks and know what the city can do, but by golly, you know what applies here? Good American saying, you know, where there's a will, there's a way. And you know what we want in our houses? We want ADU, JADU, or only you in these houses. If a person buys a house and he rents it out, he gets one tenant, he gets one lease, he gets no subleases. If he wants to have two units in the house, then he needs to live in one of them, because that's how we can preserve our communities, is with owner-occupied houses. They take care of their property, and they look after the tenants, and they build a community, and that's what this is. Daly City is a community. It is not prime pickings for developers, offshore developers. One of the examples given here today about the gas leak, the property manager manages at least 14 properties in Daly City and has a regular scam going where they help people buy these houses and turn them into tenements. And that's not what this city is. You folks are our representatives. We are the people. You represent us, and you need to fight for us. And we want you guys to sit down with us and tell us how we can make this work, how we can help you to help us.
Thank you, Ms. Swan. Okay, the next speaker on this topic is Ms. Gabriella Maxman.
I was just sitting there thinking that, as a finance professional, that we have a financial opportunity from this situation, and that I think with all of the things that the council wants to achieve that requires additional funding, it looks like beyond code enforcement, but also since we're gonna be raising the hotel tax, that there's an opportunity here to start thinking about how to maximize profits from some of these illegal ventures. Because it seems like people are coming to Daly City and taking advantage of the fact that we may be understaffed in code enforcement in comparison to other cities, that the dispatch may not be able to field all of the calls about some of these complaints. And the result is people getting away with taking income really from our city and at the same time putting our city at risk. I know, I live in Southern Hills, and there... Where I live on... By Crocker, there are mega mansions, and I've seen at least one of those mega mansions turn into what must be an Airbnb because there's a constant rotation of people in and out of one of those homes. So I think that there's a creative solution here, and I ask that you listen to everyone and really find a creative solution to this problem that can bring additional revenue to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxman. We have about, not on this topic, but under public appearances, we have about four more cards for this evening. Even though the council cannot act on the comments that was made this evening, I would like to open it up to my colleagues to make comments as to what their thoughts are, based upon what they've heard tonight.
I'll go.
Ms. Christensen, please.
I think the idea of having owner occupied is really important. I live very close to the one on Miriam. I mean, literally, a block away. Across the street from me, there are three houses, one of them new, one of them recently renovated, with eight and nine bedrooms, eight and nine bathrooms. And then next one door down, there's another multiple building. So I feel your pain. There are some things that we have done already, and that was to increase the parking requirement if the size of your house is more than... There's different... If it's 1,500 square feet, if it's 2,000 square feet, if it's 2,500 square feet, and you are required by law then to have additional parking spots. It is not retroactive. It can't be. So that's something that we can't change about houses that are already there, but anything new, we can certainly do. It's very challenging for the city to know who's violating the law. You know. A lot of people said, "Well, my neighbor here, my neighbor there." You have email. Email the business license department and let them know that a business is being run out of the house. Give as much detail as you can about what it is, and they will follow up. They usually follow up with a letter, and then they follow up with more stringent things. And if these people are running a business and not reporting it on their federal income tax, which I suspect many of them are not, that can prove to be very dangerous for them in the future. But the city cannot do that kind of going out and knowing. They don't know what you know. And so you're gonna have to step up and let the city know where the businesses are with as much detail as possible. Now, I know a lot of times people don't wanna get involved because their maybe neighbors are gonna be mad at them or something, but there's no way the city staff can do that because unless you live in the neighborhood, you don't know what's going on. It's what you see when you're hauling your trash out, or when you're talking, walking your dog. That's what gives you the information about what's going on. So I think those things, if you guys step up with that information, that that would be very helpful. I notice that there are a large number of people here today, but you certainly are not the entire Westlake neighborhood. So the law about allowing the paving, additional, what's referred to as off-driveway parking, was passed in January. So it is currently the law. So...
Who passed it?
Well, I beg your pardon? People are saying... We all did.
That's the problem.
Well, you didn't get involved. What I also recommend is that you have people in your neighborhood who read the agenda every single meeting to know what's there. It can be sent to you by email. All you have to do is contact the city clerk's office. She will email that to you on a regular basis. But there's some people here, but I bet a lot of people who own houses may feel the other way. I don't know for sure, but it can't be... It can't be just, you know, 50 people or 60 people that make the decision to change a law. So I don't know what's gonna happen, but I think we'll have to see what happens from here. That's my comment, and it's my time to talk, not yours. I'm sorry.
Please, Councilmember Christensen has the floor.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you guys go on.
Councilmember Christensen?
Oh, I'm fine. Owner occupied, an absolute must.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I just wanna say thank you for all of the residents and everyone that came out to speak on this. I think it's important to really to hear from each and every one of you what's happening around our neighborhoods. For me, it's... I grew up in Daly City. I still reside in Daly City. So this community feel and our neighborhoods are key, and we want... I understand how there needs to be a continuance to that. The issue that arises is around these rental units that have multiple rooms, and it's obviously bringing in a lot of cars, a lot of people, and unfortunately, not people that have an investment, as you stated, right? And that's what we know as Daly City. It's a community. People talk to each other, people, you know, help each other out, and this is just a testament to each and every one of you around how much you care for our city. For me, I think we need to look at this, and, you know, every different neighborhood is different, and there's, you know... And I think the Westlake neighborhood has come together and shared their voice around what they've seen and what they wanna see. And so, I mean, I am, you know, just expressing maybe we need to continue to revisit what has happened and look at kind of ways, particularly maybe it's neighborhood-based parking around what the needs are, right? As far as paving-wise, maybe, you know? And so maybe it's that, because there are, you know, different needs in other areas. People have stated that there is a need for paving. So I'm just saying, but I'm seeing the concern, I'm hearing from the Westlake community that they, you know, they don't see the paving as it. But the root cause of, I'm hearing from all of you, is that there is a need around looking at Airbnbs and also, you know, room shares. And so that's something that we, as a council, need to put on the table around how can we ensure or find a mechanism that prevents and prevents this type of situation from happening, where there aren't people invested in our neighborhoods and our communities like all of you. So I am, you know, looking toward my colleagues and making sure that we have that down the line on the agenda so we can deliberate and talk about this issue that you put in the forefront. So thank you.
Well said. Well said, Justin.
So at the last council meeting, I had... Really, I had requested we postpone this issue so that we can hear from you and the community, and I can tell you that I'm very grateful for all of you for coming today and expressing your views and your opinions. I think this is what we need, and I think we will all need together, work together, to try to come up with something that works, maybe not for everybody, but something that's reasonable, and I'm open to that. I don't know what that's gonna look like yet, but we hear you, and we get the emails, and it's better, obviously, that you're here and you're telling us what's on your mind, and we appreciate that very much. And I don't want you to, you know, get the impression that we don't care, 'cause we do. I mean, we struggle through issues about running the city all the time. And so I think by you coming out, expressing your opinion, continuing to do so, we're gonna learn even more about the problems we face from your perspective, so thank you for coming.
Ladies and gentlemen, everything that I've heard this evening from my colleagues and you folks out in the audience, I wish I got a chance to speak before my colleagues did, because they said everything that I was going to say. But I wanna add a little bit something to that. There's a saying, "What's good for the goose is good for the gander," but not in this case. I have taken the initiative to drive around Westlake. I have taken the initiative to drive around Southern Hills. I have taken the initiative to drive over in the area of Mission and Templeton, which I really feel that that particular area, especially the northeast area of Daly City, has this issue about parking, and we had to do something about it. But then, I agree with you. I don't think there is an issue in Westlake. However, ADUs and JADUs are only you? That's what I'm hearing. And, thank you. You have voiced your concern, and I think before we make any other decisions, we have to make sure that we have complete transparency to the community. I don't blame you, but where were you before when this matter came up quite some time ago? I'm not blaming you, but at the same time, I'm hearing you, and that does not mean that things can be changed. They can still be changed, and I'll be one of the first to support it, based upon what I hear from the community as well. I believe in full and complete transparency. I would like to see a moratorium placed on Westlake alone until we can get the community to give us more ideas and how we can alleviate this problem. We cannot just walk into anybody's home, as Madam Christensen said. We have to have probable cause to know that these illegal units exist, and that's what's causing the problem. So I appreciate it. Continue to work with us. I am going to ask that we revisit this matter, and we set this matter for another session here, a study session, and let's gather more information. You are a limited amount of folks. I'm not saying you need 100% of Westlake to agree before we can do something. That won't be the case. That won't be the case. Ma'am, ma'am, okay, this is my, my time. Ma'am, 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 please.
You can't do it, without a car.
Ma'am, 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 please, please. All right, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, we hear you, and we would like to hear more from you. And we're gonna take your suggestions in mind. I'm gonna read up on ADUs, JDUs. Whether you know it or not, we are trying to address the issue on Airbnb as well. And any way that the city can gain additional revenue, but not to your expense, is important to me as well. All right, so with that being said, I have nothing further. Anything else from my colleagues? Pam? Okay, you, all right.
Yeah, I just have one quick thing, is that I think a lot of, the big problem that you're saying are the rooming houses and the absentee landlords. There, and, and what can we do about it? We need to be very careful and have our city attorney research what we legally can do and what we legally cannot do, so that we don't get ourselves or yourselves in trouble. And I'm hoping that you'll be able to do that for us. And then we'll be able to proceed with a more vigorous program in making sure things are owner occupied. We could even pass a resolution to that perhaps. Business licenses, all the things that give us more control over what's happening. I know I want it in my neighborhood, and you definitely want it in your neighborhood. I think every neighborhood wants it, whether they're here tonight or not. It, it's everywhere, it's everywhere. Thank you so much for coming.
I would also ask that we place a moratorium on any permits to be issued in the area of Westlake at this particular time.
What kind of permits?
Uh, paving permits.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say building permits.
I'm just putting it out there. I'm just putting it out there.
You can't do it.
But give us an opportunity, folks, to, to look into it. This is not a decision that's being made at this time, but it's just our thoughts at this particular time. Yes, Madam?
If I might. So I did respond to Mr. Swan's email last week wherein he shared a lot of these comments with me, and he had requested that we agendize this item for, for some kind of action. I explained to him that while we are all very concerned with the issues that have been raised tonight, that we need to be able to look at each of the different issues separately. Because they're, they, they seem to be related, but they are very separate issues. Airbnb and paving yards and all the different issues are separate issues that have to be addressed separately, not collectively in one giant law that we impose. So we have to look at each of the issues that you've raised. We, we need to look at what the city now requires, what the city could require, what the options are for the council, what legally we can do, because we can't just go on people's property with code enforcement and tell them what they can do and what they can't do. They're property owners, they have constitutional rights, and we cannot violate those. So there are legal parameters. So there's many important issues that you've all raised. And we understand the problems, because we get complaints. I get them in my office, I get emails from you all the time, and we try to address them on a, on a case-by-case basis. But there is a need for a larger look at all of these issues and, and the tools that the city has available to address these issues. And so we will do that. We'll look at the issues that you've identified in the email that you sent me. We will have the staff, we'll sit down with the city attorney and our staff in community development and, and come up with those kinds of options. And then we will schedule a study session in the coming weeks where we can have a dialogue with the council, get their input around the ideas that we generate. And from there, we'll try and create a structure that we can address these things. It can't happen immediately, it can't happen overnight, but we do hear what you're saying. They are really serious issues in your neighborhood and in every neighborhood. Now, I know that a lot of you, and, you know, like the mayor said, you represent the Westlake area. But there are areas of Westlake subdivisions that are really St. Francis and other areas where people feel differently than what you're talking about today. Okay, so we don't have everybody's perspective represented here. Because there are some Westlake subdivisions where people think that this is a good idea. There are areas in Ceramone where people think that it might not be a bad idea because of the way the homes are constructed in those areas and their inability to have multiple cars parked in their driveways. So it's a bigger issue, and everybody needs to be heard. And so it will take more discussions at study sessions before we come up with a single or multiple solutions. But thank you, Mr. Swan, for sending the information that you did to me last week. And as I told you, we're willing to work with you and, and hear your ideas and then hear what we can do in response to the issues that you've been raising.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. Mr. Swan, we're not gonna go back and forth in the debate, we, we won't. But I think the city manager has put it out, you know, the feeling of most of the council at this particular time.
This is an unusual circumstance where we've been able to speak, and the council is responding to it. I think it's very constructive, and it's a very positive moment for us all.
Thank you, Mr. Swan, thank you so much. And it's all because of the effort and the community coming together. Thank you so much. All right, moving on with the cards. We have Ms. Kathy Pantasey. And after Ms. Pantasey, we have Marion Mann. Ms. Pantasey? Oh, did she leave?
No, she's coming up.
Oh, oh. I think that's twice I did that tonight. Ms. Pantasey? Ms. Pantasey, hold on. Wait till we get the stuffs. I wanna give you your full two minutes.
So that we're not fiddling with papers.
Has your name?
Has my name?
Our own individual?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mayor, okay. Good evening, Ms. Pantasey.
Okay, good evening. I have three issues to comment on. The first is that I'm, the St. Francis Heights Association conducted a survey in its newsletter regarding the proposed development on Ceramone between Geller and Callan. I asked for input from our readers about this project, and that's the results right there. So I promised our members and readers of our newsletter that I would make sure the council and city manager received a copy of their comments. Mine is the first one, and it outlines in detail why this is not the right place for this development. I hope you read all the surveys. The second point that I have to make or comment is, I have a question regarding the trees on Crestview Estates. Since the drought began, there have been over 102 million dead trees in California. My question is about these trees on Crestview Estates. Are they sound or are they likely to fall? And if some are not sound, what is the plan to take these trees down before they fall on cars, houses, or people? I believe that Crestview Estates has a homeowners association, and they're probably the ones responsible, but I'm not able to ascertain the answer to this. I was hoping that someone on the council or in the city could, could find that out for me, because some of the trees look like they're about to fall. The last is, these fine folks here that came to talk about the rooming houses springing up in their neighborhood are right. But they are not just in their area. They're in St. Francis Heights as well, and I suspect in most of the, most of the city. Because unfortunately, our city has become a business opportunity because our costs comparatively to the other houses in the county are low. And they're big houses. So these folks come in and they create these rooming houses. Oh, boy, I don't talk fast enough, do I? Anyway, so I think there's a lot more areas in the city that have the same problem.
Thank you, Ms. Pantasey. What I'd like to do is make sure that our city manager has a copy of this, and especially regarding the trees. If we have some trees that are dying, we need to know about that, because...
We'll look into it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Martel. Ms. Mann, how are you?
As usual, wonderful. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to speak to you on behalf of forty-three signers of a petition from Dojger Senior Center. Many seniors have been complaining that they're being hurt by the center. Two of the longtime seniors left the center in a huff. I called them back and ensured them that all is okay. August 1st saw an increase of 50 cents in the price of coffee in the deli and lounge. Understanding the growing costs to support Dojger Senior, the seniors have no problem with it, the increase. They're more than willing to add 50 cents to their coffee. However, the Dojger Senior Center Advisory Council held a meeting and decided not to serve coffee in the lounge after 1:00 p.m. Now, this advisory council is made up of people from Dojger Center and, of course, Joseph Curran, okay? But he's on vacation when this happened. They said not enough money, oh, it's, the Dojger Center Advisory Council decided that not enough money was raised, so the seniors in the afternoon. So the seniors were told if they chose to have coffee in the afternoon, they could purchase some in the deli. But the problem is, is the deli is closed by 1:30. The advisory board said the income was too small in the afternoon to bother serving coffee. Granted, the income is greater in the morning, you know, but why not leave the coffee out after lunch? It doesn't cost anything to leave the coffee out. But why leave the, I mean, if it doesn't, you know, it's, it's just ridiculous. It's not, the problem is the advisory board decided to pour the coffee down the drain.
Okay, you're gonna have to finish up for me, please.
Could you give me just three, four seconds left?
Okay, please.
Okay, so anyway, the advisory board decided to pour the coffee down the drain rather than leaving it in the room. Now...
Okay, Ms. Marian.
The seniors, I want to give you a message from the seniors. They know that the council is very supportive of them.
Thank you, Ms. Marian.
And that there's really no problem. They just said that you probably don't know what's going on. I'm sorry I took too long.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. Would you kindly send that letter to our city manager? And please send the letter over to our city manager, and we'll... Thank you.
We'll investigate it and report back to the council.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. Thank you, Ms. Mann. All right, next person to speak is Ms. DeGiovanni. Good evening, Pam.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I wanted to let the people in Westlake and all these areas that are having the inundation of these rooms being divided. As some of you know, I'm a member of National Council of Jewish Women and work on anti-human trafficking and SFCAT, which is the leader in the human trafficking that we work along with Homeland Security. This is a big issue, and this can also involve human trafficking and labor trafficking in our own Daly City. And it can be inundated and be a quiet operation that has not come to the forefront yet. And that this is gonna be a topic in our upcoming meetings for our anti-human trafficking, but this brings in a crime element, and that before we get to that point, we need to curb it immediately. And I know the council, and I respect the council, that I know that you realize, and I heard here tonight, which is nice to hear, as Mr. Swan said, and we realize that, we know ordinances can be changed. And that that's the great thing about policies and about people coming out, voicing their opinion. So I wanna let you know that anti-human trafficking is what I work, is what I'm working on. And if we find out any data with the chief here. So secondly, I wanted to say with my two minutes, is that Chief Martinez, based on the Charlottesville event that occurred, is far away with white supremists, white nationalists, neo-Nazis and all that. But I wanna let you know, not that we have such a big problem here because we respect our diversity, but he acted immediately when I discovered the letters KKK written on two doors. And I wanna give him a lot of credit that he acted immediately that these were a race. So I want to let people to know that it's unfortunately alive and well. We need to denounce with all together antisemitism, anti-Muslim, anti-xenophobia, and come together as a community, as we saw here tonight, and work on and keep our quality of life in Daly City, the ones we love and our community at large, because we respect our diversity and love one another. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, I have one last card, and it's Ms. Sylvia Alvarez Lynch.
Mr. Sylvester, at the last council meeting, you copied a, copied a very nasty habit that council member Buena Ventura first exhibited on December 12th, 2012, simply because he did not want to hear the truth from Judith Christensen by banging his gavel and calling a recess of the council meeting to cut out any, anything that I had to say. And you did the same thing. I went over the two-minute allotted time limit to speak. However, when watching the same meeting, other speakers were allowed by you to speak past their two minutes with your consent. It is very clear that you have discriminated against me and violated my First Amendment rights of freedom of speech under the Constitution of the United States. You did not like me telling you that by voting for a wage increase for the police, you were paying back the police union for all the campaign donations you received for your campaign. Will you now honor the same request for wage increases from other labor unions? What troubles me most is that you and the other council members who voted for a police wage increase do not provide any transparency as to how these wage increases will be paid. This is not the time to provide any wage increases to anyone who works for Daly City. You don't have the money. You place all the residents in Daly City in danger of having Daly City go into bankruptcy and suffer all the ramifications that go along with this process. Please provide some leadership and provide a transparent and responsible fiscal plan of action that is equitable to all and makes financial sense. I suggest that you hire and train future police officers when they sign a contract with the city to serve six years minimum, to serve Daly City after they finish their training. Why should Daly City provide the best police training for the benefit of other cities? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., for your comment, Ms. Sylvia Alvarez Lynch. Okay, I'm going to close the public announcements this evening, comments. At this particular time, I, any appointments from any of my colleagues? Hearing none, I'll move on to reports. Council committee reports. Vice Mayor?
So we had Affordable Housing Committee that we met with housing staff as well as our city manager and Judith Christensen on July 31st, and again on August 7th to discuss a funding request from a developer of 206 units on senior housing located at 4619 Brunswick. And so the entitlements for this project were approved by the city council on December 2015 with a condition of approval that the developer enter an affordable housing agreement with the city. And as we, what we discussed on there were some of the challenges in negotiating an affordable housing agreement with the developer. But some of the important deal points in contention were, and the results of it, I'll let everyone know. So the staff requested that the affordable housing stipulate the rent increases be limited to the same annual percentage, increase that social security payments are increased. The developer was resistant to the caps, but agreed to 5% rent caps. So that was what, what was agreed. Also, what was stipulated in passing this development prior to me being on council was a resident service plan. And there needed to be a conditions of approval for a resident services plan. Ultimately, the developer agreed to a very nominal plan that will offer minimal programming and onsite staffing, but there will be resident services and... And also, city staff indicated that we would definitely be monitoring this, especially since it's senior housing, to ensure that, yes, there's units there, but there should be adequate senior programming as well. Let's see. Also, there is a compensation for annual costs associated with compliance monitoring. So the developer, in the beginning, initially rejected the payment of fees, but was willing only to pay $14 per unit per year. But ultimately, the developer agreed to pay $50 per unit that year. And so this is the update on here. Also, just to let everyone know, this is the senior housing called Brunswick. The funding also requests does not meet the threshold requirements for funding under approval of housing trusts, and so right now, we were in discussion of this. So this is what we discussed at our previous Affordable Housing Committee meeting with the staff and council member Judith Christensen. Is there anything else?
No, I think it'll come up in the housing trust meeting. Housing finance meeting coming just after this, correct? Yes.
Thank you.
Nice job, Jocelyn.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Any other council committee announcements?
Oh, my turn. So we did have a solid waste recycling committee meeting. I think it was last... Yeah, it was last month, and we had a, what I thought was a good presentation. There's going to be a rate adjustment, and I would encourage the public to attend the meeting, the council meeting, where they're going to discuss it. We were given a preview of the presentation. It was a complete with a PowerPoint presentation and figures and charts about how that looks and what basically is the necessary thing to do. But the public obviously is invited to attend. I think it worked... They mentioned they're going to have it in September. Is that right, Pam?
Yes, September 11th is the public hearing.
So...
25th.
Oh, okay. So please come, so you'll be informed, and you can voice your opinion as to what you think of it. You are very much invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buena Ventura. Any other council committee reports? Okay. How about council committee meetings between 24th and August... July 24th and August 13th? Vice Mayor already alluded to one of those meetings, and Mr. Buena Ventura, you did. Are we in the right area? Ms. Christensen, anything else? This is on council committee meetings between 24th and August 13th.
We did meet the Affordable Housing Committee and talking about the below-market-rate ownership program, and it was a sharing of information, and there were... There's a manual that's in the process of being updated, so that less confusion about the below-market-rate housing requirements, and makes it much more clear to the public exactly what is available, what is not available, who qualifies, who does not qualify. And so we're looking forward to that updated program guidelines, and Ms. O'Bell is working hard on that. We gave some input on, you know, things, areas that we were confused about, and so she's working on that, doing an excellent job. We'll be sharing that with you shortly.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Anything else?
No.
All right, item number 13, city council. I'm not going to take too long, because I attend a lot of committee meetings, but two that's very near and dear to my heart is Peninsula Clean Energy. As you know, Daly City has done very good. Out of all the 22 cities in San Mateo County, Daly City experiences a 3% to 4% opt-out. What I mean as opt-out means that they've accepted the community choice aggregation and have moved to saving energy on PCE, Peninsula Clean Energy, or they may have opted up. But if you opt up, it's considered an opt-out because you're not taking the standard plans. I'm very happy to hear that about our folks here in Daly City. The other issue that's near and dear to my heart is the SFO Roundtable. Daly City, and I appear at the roundtable, and we're the biggest city, but I think we are getting the worst end of the stick. I will not tolerate noise shifting, which is apparently starting to happen now. And if you live in Brisbane, it's even worse because of the topography. They're up higher, but yet Daly City doesn't have enough noise monitors. What I'm hoping that we can do is we can get these jets flying out of SFO, and instead of coming over Daly City, that they fly towards, over the water to the Golden Gate Bridge and then make that left turn. But the airlines don't want to pay that extra fuel charge. So we're continuing to fight. Safety is of utmost importance, so I will keep you posted on that. There are other committees, but I'm just going to let you know about those two, which are near and dear to my heart. All right, nothing else further? Oh, any other city council? One other issue, I'd like to congratulate Chief Martinez. Thank you for your staff and another successful year on National Night Out that we had at Cerro Monte. It was so good to be out there, sir. And, you know, Chief Martinez is one of our unsung heroes. He really doesn't like the limelight, but I'm going to let you know this, folks. We got a lot more coming, so you probably have already heard, but September, watch out for September. That's all I'm going to let you know. Thank you so much, Chief. All right, moving on, item number 14, staff. We... Staff reports? Thank you.
On this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Housing Finance. Is that where it comes in, Ms. Martell?
That will be the next meeting. We'll adjourn this meeting, and then we'll go into the next meeting.
Okay. Oh, good. I thought it was... Is that the right time, 9:20?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm used to 11 o'clock, but...
Oh, God, don't make us stay till 11 o'clock again.
I'm sorry, Madam Christensen.
I can handle it. I'm old.
With that being said, I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Nigeth Chang, who is the grandmother of Kilipine, of Water and Waste Water Resources employee. Is there any other adjournment in memory of, from anyone else? Okay...
Well, I think we should have, add to our remembrance, the people who lost their lives in Charlottesville.
Oh, thank you, Madam Christensen. That's an excellent idea. So with that being said, if we can pause for a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you. The city council meeting of August 14, 2017 is now adjourned.